This meeting is being convened by video conference in compliance with Governor Cuomo's executive orders, which suspends certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow municipal boards to convene meetings via video conferencing without in-person attendance by the public. In addition, the public has been provided with the ability to view, hear, and participate in the meeting. A transcript will be provided at a later date. There is a quorum of board members for this meeting, and the meeting has been... I have something I just covered. Hang on. Go away. The link to the live stream of the meeting has been provided to the public, and a video of the meeting will be made available public access television, as well as a link on the town's website. Further, all submission materials and agendas are available to be viewed on the town's website. So, seeing that we have a quorum, let's call the meeting to order and move to our first item. Our first item is a public hearing for the King Fisher philanthropies. This is an application for a preliminary subdivision plat approval, site development plan application, and tree permit. Is there a motion to open the public hearing on this matter?
A move.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyway, John, if you want to just... You're on the grid here. Bring us up to speed with what we have before us, and then we can take a look. What I'd like to do is, I think it just makes more sense, after we conclude our discussion, the public hearing, if we move in that direction, then I think we'll take the King Fisher resolution next, and we'll just finish up that way. That makes sense to everyone. I'm sorry, John, so I cut you off.
No problem. This was a subject of a public hearing about six weeks ago. Essentially, it is an application to take three existing lots that were approved in a prior subdivision and combine them into one lot, together with the site plan approval, that shows how they will be used as an open space preserve, which will be the Round Rock Preserve. The property is owned by a not-for-profit King Fisher philanthropies. It will be subject to an open space easement with the Westchester Land Trust, owns a property next door, and also is in the process, we understand, of working out a similar type of open space easement with the town for an even larger property next door on another side. So, we hope to participate in a large parcel of open space property to the benefit of the town. My clients, the Damaris family, or the trustees of King Fisher, they saw this property, they saw how destroyed it had been in the subdivision process, and elected to purchase these three lots to preserve them from future development and keep them as an open space preserve.
Great. How much combined, if the properties are combined with the town property and the land trust, the other land trust property, what's the total acreage of potential preservation here?
Well, you have to correct me if I'm wrong. The King Fisher property is almost 12. There is a small property owned by the land trust of about one acre on Bittersweet, and then there is the parcel, I think of about 20 acres that was conserved as a part of the prior subdivision. So, altogether, we would be adding up to somewhere around 30 or 40 acres.
Okay, terrific. Okay, thank you. Anyone, any questions in connection with this application that we want to raise at this point?
I just have one question. Obviously, we have been supportive of this application generally through the process. But, Mr. Kirkpatrick, in your presentation just now, you said that your clients had seen that the subdivision had destroyed property. What do you mean by that?
The subdivision had taken the opportunity to not only clear a large parcel of it, but to dump everything from his prior construction activities on the property.
Wow, okay.
So, it was ugly.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Okay. Bob Scialli, I have a question for you. I wasn't quite sure, do we need to have a SWIP on this or the stormwater information?
Well, I had originally first indicated one should be done, because according to chapter 108, they are adding more than 1,000 square feet of new and previous. But I think in discussion with Anthony, they're going to demonstrate that the previous stormwater calculations for the entire subdivision would be able to handle this an additional runoff. So, that might preclude the applicant from actually submitting a new SWIP based on chapter 108. I would turn it over to Anthony. I think that's what him and I had originally discussed. I haven't received any of their paperwork yet, but I would imagine they will be doing that. Anthony, any comments on that?
Yes, we actually provided a short SWIP, general erosion controls, and we will demonstrate with hydro cadmols that it does handle it, because it's less impervious. So, yeah, we'll provide that.
Okay. I know we had raised this issue, or we talked about it a little bit, and I know, Bob, you've got a requirement in here or a suggestion that we take a look at the clearing and grading limit lines. Do we need those in this particular case? Or, I mean, it seems that we have clearing and grading limit lines that we've inherited from the old subdivision. But clearly, with the merging of all these lots into a single parcel, and I guess, given the nature of the application, which is preservation of land and setting up a natural preserve, I wonder whether or not we should just ask the applicant to erase the old clearing and grading limit lines and leave it at that, given the nature of this. I mean, we wouldn't normally do this on any other application, but given the nature of it, I wonder if we might be able to do that, if that makes good sense in this case.
I defer to the planning board on that. I just wanted to bring this to the attention of the planning board, so they can look at it and make a determination on it, but that is the planning board's call.
Okay. Do you think, I mean, from your standpoint, do you think we need it? I mean, obviously, we have to erase the old ones, because that makes no sense at all. And perhaps we can request them just to put a note on the plat indicating that the clearing and grading limit lines are coming off, being erased. I mean, anyone have thoughts on this? Sabrina, other board members, any concerns?
Instead of saying that they're being erased, but are no longer relevant, you know, under the open space project, or something to that nature. I don't, you know, here's the thing. The question is whether or not a new subdivision plan needs to be... Well, they're applying for a new subdivision plan, you know, maybe just a reference that any previous clearing and grading limit lines are null and void.
Yeah, I think this is Jennifer. I think if the...
As long as it continues to be, you know, open space.
If the board is amenable to basically terminating the existing clearing and grading limit line, there is going to be a lot merger plat filed with the county clerk's office. So, a note on that plat indicating that the existing amended... I'm sorry, the existing clearing and grading limit lines from the previously filed map are deemed to be extinguished or terminated. I think a note to that effect would be sufficient to eliminate those lines.
Okay. Anyone disagree with that? Any thoughts? Seems to make sense in this application. John, is that agreeable to the applicant?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, were there any other questions or issues before we open the public for questions or comments? If not, are there any hands raised for this application? Anyone looking for to make a comment or any questions on it?
Yes, there's Lori Enzinger.
Okay.
Lori, you may unmute yourself.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Lori Enzinger, President of Westchester Land Trust. I'd like to just address the earlier question from the chair about the total acres to be preserved. It's actually a bit better than what Mr. Kirkpatrick indicated. The current conservation easement that we hold on, what's called the Brandywine parcel, is actually 47 acres in size. And the preserves that we own next door, called the Casper Preserve, is two acres. So, all told, when this project is fully completed with King Fisher, the total quarter will be over 60 acres in preservation, which is really terrific. And a quarter is quite important and recognized by the Hudson Valley Natural Resource Mapper as containing significant flora and fauna. So, it's a great, great project. We're working with Jennifer, hopefully, to finish up some paperwork on the Brandywine property, which is still owned, by the way, by the developer. And that will be, hopefully, cleared up shortly, so that we can work with the town to have the town create a trail system and link that to the Damaris property.
Wonderful. Thank you, Lori. Great to hear from you, too.
Good to see you.
Any other comments, questions? Not seeing any. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion's carried. So, we have before us, let's take a look at the resolution. And are there any questions or issues with the resolution that's been prepared?
Actually, two comments, just based on discussions that we had just tonight. Condition number 13 says that the applicant shall submit a SWIP in accordance to chapter 108A of the town code. Based on Mr. Scialli's comments earlier, it sounds like it's possible, based on some additional information from Anthony from JMC, that a SWIP may not be necessary. So, I'm suggesting, if that is the case, that we add language to that to say, unless otherwise determined by the town engineer, to not be required based on existing stormwater control measures for the overall subdivision.
Great. Yep. Good. Bob, is that okay? Sounds okay?
It always sounds very nice when Jennifer says it.
Well, thank you. The other thing that I wanted to bring up was condition 23. That's the condition about the clearing and grading limit lines. And I suggest, maybe we add a statement there to say that the planning board is, you know, basically approving the extinguishment of the existing clearing and grading limit lines. Then a note should be added to the plat to that effect.
Yep. Good.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else anything? If not, is there a motion to move forward and adopt the resolution and approve this application?
Motion.
Second?
It's amended.
As amended.
As amended, yes. Thank you. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Want to go a roll call on this? So, Eldad?
Yes.
Canaan? Don't start her there. She was there.
She'll be muted. Yes.
Okay, Dick?
Dick's, yes.
And is Canaan there? I don't see her now.
She's there.
Is she there?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Okay, thank you, Canaan. I don't see you on the grid, sorry. Got to get a bigger grid. Okay, so the motion's carried, the resolution's approved, and thank you very much for a wonderful project. Thank you for a... I hope it wasn't too arduous with the ZBA, not us, but good luck, and thank you very much for this wonderful, this wonderful thing.
So, Bob, can I...
Thank you.
Hang on, can I offer a couple of comments before you all leave? You know, we see applications for development all the time, and this is obviously something which is quite unique. And really, to build a healthy community, I think it's, I think we would all agree that we need development, but we also need a proper and appropriate component of open space and recreation space and green and all of those things, which are especially important in this community in that we live in this forest. And I'd just like to, I mean, with respect to, for instance, Warburg and Gedney and Sunny Ridge, this community actually benefits, I think, I think the face of this community has benefited greatly by the gifts that we've had from benefactors. And we are, I think, enormously lucky to have such folks in the community. And I just wanted to say thank you, and I'm certain that your legacy will be valued for many generations to come.
Thank you.
Here, here.
Yep. Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, we move now to our second item, and this is the continued public hearing on Chapacua Crossing, the East Village MFPD, application for a subdivision approval, site development plan approval, planning board application for wetlands permit, steep slopes permit, tree permit, and stormwater pollution prevention plan approval, 480 Bedford Road. So, I don't think we need a motion. This is a continuation of the public hearing. And here we go. Andy, did you want to make any statements or bring us up to speed on anything that you think is important for us to hear at this point?
Just briefly, Mr. Chairman, good evening.
Hopefully, no changes at this point.
We have no changes. We have further progress on work that we have been doing since our last meeting in January. I have one figure to share with you. One of our assignments was to complete the master subdivision process. This is a receipt from the county clerk's office dated April 15, 2021, at 15:35:55, acknowledging filing of the master subdivision plat, which we appreciate the town's assistance in finalizing the Board of Health, Department of Health, in signing, and the planning board chair signing, so that it could be filed last week. Besides that, we have moved forward with completing the East Village subdivision plat, which is derived directly from this and includes 91 lots, 91 townhome lots, plus a 92nd lot for the balance of the area to be held in common by the homeowners association. So, that lot, that plat has been filed with the town in accordance with many comments that have been received from town staff and addressed, both in the engineering documents and also in this plat. The East Village site plan, as you mentioned, has not changed substantively since last fall. One thing that we did add, that's not reflected in this illustrative plan from last fall, was the cut across connection work through with the planning board from just north of the auditorium, in the middle of the frame, to the plant, to the office parking lot here, to provide for an additional circulation connection. Other than that, we have been working with your staff, both engineering and attorneys, to button up the various components of related documents, including phasing plans, engineering documents, easements, and the like, so that we believe that we are now prepared to have everything buttoned up for you and are here to answer any further questions, hopefully, close the public hearing, and move on.
Thank you. Thank you, Andy. Anyone else any comments or any questions from board members?
On any part of the documentation?
Well, I think the resolution's further. It's after we deal with the public hearing. So, I guess if there are any issues in general or specific at this point, and of course, we'll see if there are any comments from the public.
I have a... Bob Scialli, did you go through the final subdivision plat application yet?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so maybe you can help me. I guess I'm not following why some things are here. There's a number nine that says, "Does the proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code requirements?" Is it not applicable, or is it a no, or is it a yes? Do you know? Or does the applicant know?
I would defer to the applicant or possibly Ms. Sabrina on this.
It's what?
I would defer to the applicant or Sabrina on that answer.
Okay, Andrew?
I would say that the plat itself, which is just a subdivision of land, doesn't fall under the energy code, which, in my understanding, is more building-related.
This is just for the plat, okay. Didn't catch that. Thank you. That's a good answer.
That's why I deferred it to him. He knows the answers to everything.
Well, that's right. All right, I guess the others are of the same ilk, so that's okay.
Okay. Anyone else any questions, comments for the applicant? If not, are there any questions or comments out there from the public?
No one has their hand raised at this time.
Okay. All right. Not seeing any comments or requests from the public, and having fully exhausted our questions, I guess, from the standpoint of the board. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
A move.
Second? Okay, second was Dick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion's carried, 5-0. So, we move now to the exact resolution that we have before us.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question first?
Sure, certainly.
The number six on the agenda, SG Chapacua A and B LLC, extra time for the master subdivision, is that still on the agenda, or is that off the agenda?
I don't see any need for it.
Okay.
Right? Right? I mean, Mark, there's no reason for it, is there?
I didn't hear what you said. Number six was what? Clinton, could you please repeat that?
SG Chapacua A and B LLC for master subdivision, granting the time extension.
No, it's been filed, so it's no longer necessary.
Right. That was my fault. I was supposed to alert people about that the other day, when I heard that the master subdivision had been filed. So, asleep at the switch, sorry.
It's all right.
Thank you.
My crack crew will keep me on the track.
Dave, again.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So, let's take these resolutions that we have before us and run through these and see if there are any issues or questions. I guess the applicant, Mark, have you seen the final version, final draft version? So, there's no need to really play with the marked up one. We have a change, you know, change one as well, which I don't think really helps us. So, it's just the final one that you have in front. Okay. I will note that there are something like 24 pages of memos and plans and letters and correspondence, virtual who's who of Chapacua. And thank you, Felicia and Sabrina, for putting this together. Great work. Boring work, but really very, very important. Thank you very much. Okay, let's turn then to the final draft version, not the marked up one.
And Mr. Chair, you will need to do the subdivision first.
Right. Okay. All right, so let's take that one, the subdivision resolution that's been drafted. Do we have any issues, questions? I think, from our standpoint, we've sort of exhausted this thing and looked at it and turned it over, et cetera, so we're set. But I guess we should take any questions, comments from the applicant on the ingredients here.
And we're looking at the draft that was circulated on Friday?
Correct. I don't think it's been changed since.
That's fine. As long as, if that's what, we're all on the same page, then I do not have any comments. Andy?
No.
No, we have no comments on that draft. That draft is acceptable.
Okay. Any questions, comments from board members on that draft?
No.
Yep.
Okay, we're set on it. So, is there a motion then to adopt the subdivision resolution?
Don't move.
As prepared?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call on this, please. So, Dick?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Eldad?
Yes.
Canaan?
Yes.
And I'm yes, so 5-0, the motion's carried. So, we're set on the subdivision resolution. Okay. Let's take the other document then. Again, any questions, issues in connection with that draft? Again, I think it was the same one that was drafted on Friday and sent around to everyone.
If it's the Friday draft of the site development plan approval document that we saw on Friday, there's no comments from the applicant.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments from board members?
I need a classification up. You know, on page 29 of 38, there's a redlined section that's taken out, number 26. I'm curious, why was that taken out? Or is it replaced someplace else that I missed? It says pay to the town of Newcastle an inspection fee, et cetera, 3% for roads.
I think that was relocated in a different position in the planning board resolution. It was moved further down.
Okay.
Prior to the issuance of a fill-in and grading. We get it before the plat sign, but I think we moved it down on that one. That's why it's taken out there. It's still in there, but moved down further down the line.
Now, condition 41.
I can't... No, I guess I didn't read it well enough. Okay, 41. Yep, right. Downed it. Excellent.
I had a question on the Loop Road, which was on the draft 2438. Let's see if I can find it on the final version. The question I had there, Andy referred to the cutout going down to the parking lot. Should we not mention it in this section? And I'm looking at a whereas, it's not really a condition, it's just, I think, something that we all agree that we would do. Let's see if I can find it on the final draft. Yeah, I think it's where as clause number, line 37 on page 2436. Perhaps it's dealt with later on. I didn't catch it when I went through it, but perhaps it is.
Mr. Chairman, it is referenced in the list of documents. We showed that sketch of that connector in December, referenced in towards the end of that, and we agreed to do that.
Okay, very good. Okay, that's fine by them.
And Andy, I believe that plan will be part of the plan set that's going to be signed by the chairman as well.
Precisely.
Okay. Good. Anyone else any questions, comments?
I think it's very comprehensive.
Yeah. Yep, very good. Okay, no comments from the public. Of course, we already closed the public hearing. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as drafted?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Canaan? I think you're muted. Okay, Canaan, okay. Yes, okay. Dick?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Eldad? I think you're muted. Yes?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm yes, so the motion's carried, the resolution's approved, 5-0. Okay, so I think we are set and done. Thank you very much, all of us, all of you, and best of luck with the next series.
Thank you.
Okay.
I enjoyed it. I enjoyed it. That was, that was a lot of fun. Thank you very much, everyone.
Well, we were, we were thinking of you, Felix. You have so many things that you have to, you know, out of 127 or 72, we thought we'd give you extra time to work on those.
But can you just say one more time because that we're done? Did you say that? Were those words? Did I?
I was expecting like confetti cannons or something to go off in the background.
A band playing something.
Well, I'm not sure what I'm gonna do with the rest. It's our kind of Christmas.
I have one thing to say. I have one thing to say, guys. Is Matt gonna come up with the matrix on this so we can start working off of that?
We'll see when you want the time extensions.
Felix. Well, it's, it's taken a few moments and there's been a few meetings, but I appreciate all the volunteers have worked so hard on this. All the consultants. Bob, there were many times I was hoping you were gonna run out of paper or numbers or or whatever it was, but we're at the end and we're very grateful to finally be there. I haven't, that hasn't quite settled in yet, but thank you.
Felix, if I may, I think it would be inappropriate to let your generous sale of the Wallace Auditorium go unremarked. I know the town is grateful for that, for that, for that transaction. And I know that the town didn't pay a lot for it. And so I've kind of been feeling a little bit bad about that. And I've decided pending legal review to deep into my personal finances and double the price.
To $2?
Yeah, we still want our check, Tom. Don't, don't kid yourself.
Right, we still, we haven't gotten the first dollar yet. If it comes, we're going to frame it. It's gonna go right next to the TCO for Whole Foods. But anyway, we're, listen, we're happy that that auditorium has got a second life. And we hope that the community enjoys it. And in years to come, we maybe all will meet there under a set of circumstances that don't involve an application.
Well, let, let my check for a dollar. You can use my check for a dollar to leverage the town council to come up with theirs.
All right, well, I would say I'm gonna miss you, but let's just say I look forward to seeing you soon.
Well, Felix, you're still gonna see me with the resolution conditions, right?
And let, let's call a spade a spade. You'll be back for those time extensions.
That's right. That's when you'll see Mr. Branda too. That's right, everyone.
Well, we certainly know where to go. All right.
Okay.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, guys.
Good to see you.
Goodbye.
Okay, we move now to our next matter. This is an informal appearance before the board, first time. Simpson, 35 Hammond Ridge. It's an application for a site development plan approval and application for stormwater management in erosion and sedimentation control.
Mr. Chair, can I ask you a question first?
Sure.
You have later on the agenda is number seven, where the sayings have asked for an extension granting time. Do you need me to remain on for that or?
And I'm here on that, Clinton. If there was any way to do that now, it would be greatly appreciated. I'm just here if there's any questions.
Okay, let's do that. We'll just hop forward and get that done.
Okay.
Courtesy for, I'm sure Mark wants to go out and celebrate with Felix at this point, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So okay, this is the extension on the Singh application, 15 Heathco Drive, application for a subdivision approval, lot line amendment, merger, wetland permit, tree removal permit, stormwater permit, 15 Heathco Drive. So the applicant is asking for an extension. Any questions, problems, issues with anyone on this extension?
I have none.
Okay. Is there a motion to grant the extension that's been requested?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motions carried. And we'll see you later then. Well, thank you.
I was under the impression that Sunshine's Children's Home was on. That's a different matter. There was an extension for Sunshine.
There is an extension for Sunshine Children's Home as well. Do you want to?
That's, that's the one that I, that's the one I'm here for, not, not the other one. I didn't know what the other one was.
Someone's gonna have to fix the billing.
When, when is the project gonna end, do you think, you know?
We can take a look.
Yeah, no. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, on behalf of Sunshine's Children's Home, Mark Weingarten. They're making very good progress. We do think it's gonna be about another year. The building is up. They've started doing the roughing inside. They're starting work on the outside. The weather is now cooperating. As you know, there were some delays. There was a lot of work that had to be done with the well monitoring program and a number of conditions that had to take place before the actual building could start. And everything is now moving very well. We think we have about another year out there. Right now, we have our steep slope permit that's up. So you're only permitted to grant six months' extension. So we've asked for six months. We're probably gonna have to be back for that one more time and be back for the wetlands back in in October. But right now, things are going very well. We're working well with the town and through the oversight. From what I understand, things are going, you know, the way they're supposed to. And we'd like to be finished about this time next year.
Okay, terrific. Any questions, comments, problems with the extension? If not, is there a motion to grant the extension that the applicant has requested on the steep slopes permit? Please?
I didn't want.
Someone want to make that motion?
So moved.
Motion.
Second, second Canon, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion's carried. Thank you very much, Mark. Have a nice night.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to, I'm going to leave you and turn it over to Jennifer Gray.
Okay, back to the ice cream.
Bye, Clinton.
Everyone, and Mr. and Ms. Simpson, I'm sorry to have interrupted you.
No, this was entertaining. It's good.
Very, very sorry to hear that.
Be well, Clinton.
Be well.
Take care. All right, we resume. We go back to the Simpson 35 Hammond Ridge, again, application for a site development plan approval, application for stormwater management and erosion and sedimentation control, application. So are you presenting the application yourselves?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Okay.
So how do we do this? So we submitted all the paperwork to you. We only recently found out we may not need the stormwater system. So if we don't need it, we can drop that from the application, but we want final confirmation. We don't need it before dropping it. And what's what we need to do?
Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I can kind of summarize.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
So, so the subject application is before you is part of the Hammond Ridge subdivision, which was approved by your board back in 2003. It was a very large subdivision between Newcastle and North Castle. And this was known as Lot 27 when you approved it. As part of the subdivision approval, this was one of the subdivisions where you said building coverage and development coverage, which in my review is going to become important in a little bit. The applicant is looking to locate an in-ground swimming pool and related fencing and equipment towards the rear of the existing home on the site. There's areas of steep slopes. There's a septic system and that's the project that is before you. Um, in general, this activity is a type two action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, so you have no further environmental review. There is an amendment that is needed to be made to the short form EA where a no needs to be checked, and I indicated that in my review memo. That should be changed so that our records are complete. The, in the application material, there are coverage calculations worksheets, which will also need to be filled out. So we have the actual worksheet in addition to the coverage mapping that was submitted as part of the application. In, in review of the plans, in my review, we need to add north arrows to the plans, lot and bulk measurements. This is an odd shaped lot. I don't have it up on my screen or anything, but the road kind of wraps around the lot. So I would ask for confirmation of front and side and rear yards so that the information is consistent with the lot as it was approved in the subdivision approval back in 2003. The, the development coverage or the building coverage is consistent with the planning board's approvals in the resolution in 2003. Where we run into an issue is with the development coverage. And just to give you a sense, 2003, the planning board allotted for a 10% increase in development coverage, typical 15% increase in 15% increase in, 10% in building coverage, 15% increase in development coverage. So the allowable development coverage on this lot was 8,308.75 square feet. Based on the information that was submitted, the development coverage mapping, the development coverage today is 8,179 square feet. So it is consistent with what was approved back in 2004. The applicant is proposing to add an additional 942.18 square feet. Okay, this would leave a total of 9,121.18 square feet. To gain some of that additional coverage, the applicants are proposing to shave off an area of the driveway and that equates to about 678.9 square feet. They're looking at a net reduction in 92.9 because they are looking to put back some of that impervious area from the driveway further down towards the garage. Okay, so they're, they're trying to balance out by shaving, adding a little bit more and trying to overall look at how much they could detract from the coverage requirement. So at the end of the day, there's an exceedance of coverage with this new pool and the equipment and everything else of 519.53 square feet. And that is important to for the, for the planning board to understand this project is still within the code requirement for development coverage, but it is not within your subdivision approval requirement for coverage. In my memo, there's also a couple of other comments regarding mapping, location of pool equipment, things of that nature that you'll need to amend the plan set to include. That's kind of a summary of my review and the project.
Okay, thank you. Do we?
Dennis has some comments too.
Yes, but I wanted to, before we turn to Dennis, I was wondering also, Sabrina, something else. That's, I don't know. Okay, sorry. Here's another question I was gonna raise. And perhaps we can see a little bit more clearly what we're proposing to do with the driveway. Looks like the darks, the dark area is adding some. I know what the other comment was. Can we, can we get on these plans? The neighboring properties, neighboring houses. So we know what the proximity is and if we need to look at vegetation to buffer the pool, et cetera. Sorry, forgot.
Excellent.
Maybe you can help us, help us what, help us with the driver. I'm not quite clear. I understand what is proposed here, what's going on.
Bob, do you have the plans up on your screen that you can share?
I do not.
Mr. Simpson, do you have them on your screen?
Yeah, we're working on it.
Oh, okay, cool. Thank you.
And just in regards to the neighbors, we only have one neighbor that we have got in any reasonable distance. The other neighbor is, you know, thousands of feet from us. And the other one's on the other side of a road, if you look at the map. So we're right.
Right, okay.
It's only one and we were gonna, we were actually in the process of putting more, we have trees between our properties and we're putting more trees between our properties.
Okay, if you could just, you know, draw that in on the next, on the, on the plan, we'll be fine. I'm sure there will not be a problem.
Yes. I would, I would think not, but it's, it's still gonna, it might be a visibility issue. I don't, until we see where the other houses are. You know, the, also, is there an issue with mapping out the septic fields or something like that?
I think that was Bob's comment.
And, you know, it's, now I'm curious, Sabrina, this is, this is a bend and it's really almost a 90-degree bend. Does that mean they have two front yards?
I don't know. I wasn't sure, you know, in, in looking back at the old plans, it was speak with Tom DePaul to get an interpretation of that.
Yeah, I mean, I, that's, I have that issue where I have a, not a quite a 90-degree turn on my property, but it's about you know, 80 or 75 degrees. And I was told you have two front yards. Congratulations.
And that's more setback. You also have two rear yards.
So it shouldn't matter too much because we're the.
It shouldn't, but for consistency with the with the zoning conformance table, making sure that, you know, everything is consistent. Thank you for sharing.
Yep, thank you.
So just for clear, the one question that you're looking for, are you looking for us to answer this question? Is this a side yard or a front yard? And this is, you know, which is, which side is which?
Yeah.
I think there's two, there may be two front yards.
Right.
The driveway is, and then where the other bound is. But if the bend is shallow enough, according to whatever the reg is, then maybe it's not an issue.
I would recommend, I would recommend you have your architect, Mr. Haynes, contact Bill, Tom DePaul, and just make certain to Sabrina's point, they show all this front yard, side yard, and rear, et cetera.
Right, if where my arrow is, is a front yard, then there may be a variance required because there's no pools allowed in a front yard.
But can I just, can I just, Mr. Simpson, Mr. and Ms. Simpson, we're not, we're not asking you to come up with the interpretation of what the front yard is. That is something that the town will need to do. And then apply that interpretation to your particular case.
Right, your, your engineer or your architect should contact the building inspector for this interpretation.
Understood. If you came to our property and you saw the way it was set up, you would, you would, it'd be very clear that it's, it's a side yard, not a front yard, which is the way.
This is a, right, this is a zoning issue, however, it's, it's not it's not, it's not the way in which you use the property. It's actually the geometry of the property in the context of the zoning code.
Understood. We're pulling up, we have our original plans here, when the builder put it in with the coverages to the different side and front yards.
Oh, good. That could be helpful.
But why don't we just, for the matter of time, leave it with us and then to come back to this group with just the definition of where they are to confirm that this is not in the front yard. It's a.
Right, right.
Right, typically you would show on your plan the distances for the front side and rear yards. Documented.
Add it to this. It was in some other version that we had worked on with this, but yeah, that's fine. Well, well, so that's what to do for us is to add that. But assuming that the pool is in the rear yard, do we want to zoom into the driveway or are there other components we want to talk about?
Yeah, if you could tell us about the driveway, so at least I can understand what's going on here.
And let me share some backstory with the community here. We bought the house in 04. It was built in 06 with the original owners. And, you know, we got all the builders' special things that, you know, as people who live in New York City didn't really know you had to have with houses or replace. So we got this, we had this really awkward tie rail system here in the front that, you know, fell apart. And so over the years, we, we changed this out to what we think is a very beautiful stone walk. We added a stone wall and all this stuff. And then effectively, we used all our extra coverage up. And that, that's why we're here today, just to give a little bit of backstory. And when we heard that, well, we're gonna, you know, we, we had two choices. We could either come here today or we could take down the beautiful stone wall that most of our neighbors think really looks nice in front of our house. And so I was like, I thought it'd be better to, to go through this longer process to do this. And so the solution that came up with, with the idea that we can actually take from the edge of the driveway, our driveway would still be 30 feet from where the cars are all the way out. And we, and we'd save a little bit. Our driveway is, let's say, 12 feet wide, so it would go down to 10 feet wide. So by saving this extra two feet here, plus this extra space here that we actually put in when the kids were little, because they just wanted extra space, which we don't need anymore. It would just go back to, you know, where the original driveway size was, basically. To complicate matters. To complicate matters and which causing the confusion here, we also replaced the wooden deck that is basically falling apart. The builder gave us with a new deck that we actually made into a garage. And to stay within the code, we have to add blacktop here, because you need now, instead of having three garages, we have four garages. One going under where the old deck was, that's why there's like a plus minus in the, in the, in the, in the, um, in the driveway. And the, and the reason we didn't just complete this, when we completed the garage, um, a couple of months ago. Was we, our thought was is while we're redoing the whole driveway and then people are driving trucks up to do the pool, we didn't want to have fresh blacktop here that, you know. That trucks over, so we just figured we'd get approval and do the exact driveway once it's done.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, uh, Bob, did you have some comments? We've got a memo here.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Um, basically, number one, uh, as I said before, from a technical standpoint. They don't need stormwater because they're not exceeding a thousand square feet of net new impervious. And basically, what they're doing here is taking the existing asphalt off, I guess, on the left side of the drawing. And adding more to the north side, um, and when I do the calculations, they don't need it according to chapter one oh eight eight. In light of the fact they did put it in there, so I just need clarification on whether the planning board is gonna require this as a mitigation. With the overage that Sabrina had mentioned, or to answer Mr. Simpson's question on whether they need to do it at all. So that's something the planning board has to decide, but from a purely technical standpoint, they do not need a SWIP. However, the planning board can make that determination as mitigation, because they're over the development coverage as stated by Ms. Sabrina. I'll leave it up to you guys.
Right, okay, thank you, Bob.
Number two. Uh, the um, onsite wastewater treatment system. Uh, doesn't appear to match what's on the ASBIL, I submitted that with my memo, hopefully, Mr. Simpson had received it. Um, I would think it's critical in this case, because we need to meet the county rules and regs, which is fifty foot from the coke, from the pool. To the septic areas in it, I couldn't make it match up with what the county showed and what your architect did. What I'd recommend, Mr. Simpson, is to use the swing ties on the ASBIL that I provided to you. Give it to your architect, have him put the swing ties on that was done by Mr. Donnie many, 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 many years ago. That's gonna give you a much better idea where your laterals are and where the junction boxes are. So at least when you show the absorption fields on there, you'll get a better handle on whether they're fifty feet or not, so I'd recommend that. Uh, that was number two, uh, number three, the architect should show exactly the elevations of the first floor, the basement floor and the pool elevation. Uh, that was not shown, that's critical, because that's important to know, but that's gonna dictate, excuse me, how you have to grade out the property. And that was one of my concerns, and number three, they should show the limits of disturbance, because that's gonna be predicated upon the elevation of the pool. And if we don't know the elevation of the pool, we quite don't know how it's gonna be graded out. So your architect has to really look into that and provide a grading plan as well. That was number three. Uh, number four, basically, is a generic one, basically, there's obviously, as Sabrina stated, this is an older subdivision, Ammon Ridge. Uh, filed map number twenty seven, three thirty one, uh, I attached that to my memo as well. I would give that to your architect and have him put on a clearing rating, so it's shown, just so everyone's on the same page. Uh, and number five, we just general notes. As my comments for tonight, Chairman.
Very good, thank you, Bob, uh, Dennis, you had some comments?
Well, yes, I I think, um, I know at least Mr. Brownell probably alluded to, you know, at this point. It's generic in nature, because since there wasn't a landscaping plan, I really can't comment on the specifics. I just tried to maybe provide a little guidance and I guess Mr. Simpson did indicate, you know, uh, one of the focus areas being the um, property line. Um, and uh, in the end, even if it is uh, just one neighbor, uh, I did think the uh, contours of the area, you know. Do do provide um, sort of an interesting view, uh, you know, fro- fro- from that particular neighbor from the rear. So that would be uh, probably in consideration of uh, whatever your um, goal would be for a uh, for a planting plan, at least along the property line. And, you know, I've seen also, um, designs for people that, you know, wish to even do additional screening uh, closer. Um, especially with respect to a fence, sometimes if it appears on, you know, sort of a, a landscape that is uh, predominantly, uh, you know, maintaining turf cover. Um, I've heard at least one applicant, uh, before the ERB make a comment that they wanted to use perimeter fencing. Because they didn't want that motel eight look or whatever the comment was. Um, so sometimes people will, you know, do do plantings to sort of like soften that, 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 that fence view. Um, and also, I I I would say in consideration of your ask, um, you know, plantings, uh, and then sort of. Elimin- even eliminating areas that, you know. Consec- as a consequence, it should be put in trees in if it's going to remove area or square footage that is lawn. I think that is something you may want to show or advance, because I see that as a nice pairing with, you know, just talking about. Hardscape coverage, um, materials that are. You know, building in nature, et cetera, I think, you know, maybe a more holistic, comprehensive package, I think, would, would, would serve you well in consideration of your ask.
Okay, good, thank you, Dennis. Can we give some direction to the applicant with regard to the um, the proposal on the driveway? You know, uh, taking two feet off the length of it, uh, to help with the development. Uh, are we concerned with that? Uh, it seems to me that we normally do do that, but I, I think board members should weigh in on this.
Uh, I, I think that it's appropriate to do, um, I, I, I mean, I understand that there's now a fourth garage. Which requires a, a pad in front of it. Um, I think that we ought to be considering, uh, what the possible benefit might be. Uh, Bob and Dennis, uh, Bob Cioli and Dennis, with respect to maybe that pad being in a uh, a pervious surface. We can, we can come back to that, whether that has any, we think has any positive benefits that makes that number. Uh, more, more uh, palatable to us. Um, the other thing that that I'm looking at, if I could just jump to another subject for a second, Bob.
Yes.
Which is, um, I don't see, it looks like this pool with its walkway around it is set in, in lawn. Is that the intent?
Yes.
So there's no, there'll be no patio outside the pool, adjacent to the pool?
So, are we on you, or? Can you hear us?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 wait, great. Um, so we, you know, we, we've lived here for fifteen years, so we're, we're very cognizant and been of the, you know, of the idea that, you know, of, of using space. So we, we, you know, we just, there'll just be lawn and we have our current deck is here, so it's fourteen feet from the deck to the pool. So we just have to walk on the lawn from the deck to the pool.
I'm sorry, when you say deck, uh, it, and you said earlier that there's a garage under the deck, so I'm not, I don't understand the grades here. The deck is, the deck is, is it, is the deck at the second level, what, what's the elevation of the deck relative to the lawn?
Oh, that's a good point, it, it, um, so that's probably why you need the numbers, so the deck is on the first floor of the house, the garage is in the basement. And to the deck, you walk straight off of the deck into the pool.
How do you park under the deck if it's at grade? Does a grade fall away enough?
There was a retaining wall built.
There's a retaining.
Outside, like from the garage out. And when the hill slope, so the hills is, you know, the land is higher on the um, side of the house, like where the pool is around to the front yard.
Very good, it seems to me that these, that the, the grades on this drawing, I just can't interpret them to, to find a way. That the, that the um, the configuration of the deck relative to grade, relative to the pad, makes sense to me. I, I think that we really, we, we really need the elevations on these, on the spot elevations on the, the improved areas like the deck. And the proposed pool, and uh, I, I think that Bob Cioli's already made this point. And the uh, existing uh, elevations on the driveway and the pad, and then the grading plan that shows how this all gets resolved.
Actually, so there's almost no grading, but I understand your point that we need to give you, tell you what the elevation here is of the deck. It's one step down to here, what the elevation is to here, and then the elevation to here, it's, you know, all within a, a foot or two as well. This is all, and this is all existing, by the way, it's all, it's all flat here, and it's just one step up onto the deck.
Well, I just don't understand how you park under that deck if it's only one step above grade, I mean, I just.
It's not above, it's one step above the retaining wall and then it's ten feet below, this is all, you know, um, is all flat.
The grades, the grades on the left side, uh, where you enter the existing deck and the grades of the existing driveway, that whole side. If those are two foot contours, the contours don't represent what the, the retaining wall. So we, I, it just, uh, we don't need to belabor this point, I think that you really need to, to do a, a grading plan so that we can understand what's actually happening here.
Yeah, some cross sections might be very helpful.
Yeah, I think, I think so, because thi- this is all ten feet below this, so.
Right, the drawing doesn't show.
Makes that happen.
Right, the drawing doesn't show that, so it'd be helpful to have that, uh, next time.
Okay, sure, so we'll do that and then, but the, I wanted to come back to Mr. Cioli's point. This covers where the distance from the pool to the septic fields. It just, when we redid the um, uh, uh, drawing from our original meeting to, to match up to the survey. We, we didn't, he didn't transfer the lines over, but this is what you want, is you want these lines over and you want the septic lines over on the, or the newer submission.
Uh, yes, let me draw on this one second, I'll kind of show you what I'm talking about, uh, let me get the color. Let me get the line. When you look at the ASBIL that the county approved. Goes like this.
I'm sorry.
You might have been looking at the plans, because the county has two steps, two-step process, they approve the plans, then the ASBIL. So this is not shown anywhere. So I don't know what your architect was looking at, but that's not in, which kind of helps you. But my point is, when they do the ASBILs, the engineer gets a shot from here, here, here. And they take swing ties to all the junction boxes leading up here. So you, your architect has the ASBIL, he just has to put it in the CAD and get the swing ties to locate a junction box here, 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 here. And that's gonna give you a very good idea where this is shown, because it's critical, this fifty foot is adhered to. Because that's, that's a, which is the county rule, so I gave you all the information, give it to your architect. Uh, he should be able to figure it out, what to do, put it on his plan, put it in CAD, change it from PDF to AutoCAD, and he should be able to do that, so.
So actually, we, we, we thought it was a different rule, we thought it was fifty feet from the expansion area and not from the boxes. So the boxes are probably a hundred feet from this.
I understand that, but once you get the boxes in, then you can put in the expansion, these expansion area, these are all seven feet apart.
Right.
So once you know where the existing boxes are, what you do is have to replicate a hundred percent, so whatever you have for existing. You need a hundred percent for proposed, which is the expansion, so it will help you regardless.
Understood, I just want to clarify a point here, that the expansion here is not the same size as here. Because the expansion plan goes in that direction to, 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 to facilitate that, I just want to make sure that's not a problem.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
But, you know, the, it, it's not shown like this. It's, it's on the plan I gave you and your architect, so I would, if he has a question, have him give me.
Okay, but the messages will have this re- redrawn in and separate to that is we need to get the, the grades tidied up here.
Absolutely.
Yep, that's easy enough.
To a Tom's point, you, you definitely need grades here, 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 here.
And then we need a, you know, a, a, a location of the nearest house that, you know, that might have a view shed into the pool. And then cross sections over in the, where the fourth garage is gonna be, or something like that. So we can understand the differences in the height, we, this is just two dimensions and we need three dimensions for that, I think.
Okay, so that's all easy, so it doesn't sound like we're being asked to change anything at this juncture, just really, we have to provide more information for all the items described.
Right, I have a section along here.
What was that, Bob?
I'm saying you can have a section along there, might help, so you're talking about the deck?
Yeah, that, that's one way to do it, sure.
I guess, I guess I would put it a little bit differently, um, yes, we aren't asking you to change anything. But at the same time, we aren't necessarily agreeing to anything at this point.
Understood, but understood.
Right, so, um, and one of the determinations that, that, that you need to get to, I know it's on your list, but just to restate it. Is to uh, get a, a reading from uh, from the town, from, I think it's the building department, whether you've got a front yard condition here or not. Because we, the planning board, if it is a front yard, the planning board needs to take that into consideration. Uh, I think as to, you know, how we mitigate that, if we decide to mitigate that. Uh, in your final, in your final plan, with respect to grading and landscaping and various things that might help mitigate that condition.
So we have a plan here that it shows it is a front yard condition and our front yard setback is seventy five feet. And it rolls around the full edge, the full curve, we have it on our original plans.
Okay, then.
So, and then I guess that's why the architect also here, I don't know if you can see this, put that it's, it's not, he thought it was not applicable, because the way it's property set. But I guess this will have to be considered.
In, in this, in this instance, it's not about the setback of where it's located. It's about the fact that the code specifically states there shall be no pools in the front yard. And so what the planning board is, is saying is that there needs to be, they need to understand the grading in the area. What the view from that street is, how it can be mitigated if they were to support the pool in this location. I also believe it may require from the zoning board of appeals.
Understood, so you would get through the planning board, assuming they approved it, then it would go to the zoning board, is that the order?
Yeah, it would be a, it would be a condition of approval.
Understood, for what it's worth, you would, there's no, you would never see this from the road, but I, so it sounds like that's gonna be a requirement. So I don't know if that gets addressed here now or at a future time.
Well, what I think would be helpful is maybe submitting some photographs of, from the road as to what you'd see where the pool is. You know, staking out where that pool is going to be to ensure that there is no view. And, you know, that way the planning board has a little bit more information to try and decide how they want to handle it.
I think that's a very good point, that's a very good suggestion.
By the way, the, the house is maybe twenty feet over the road, so it's, it's very high up compared to the roads, you.
Right.
Well, those are all things that, th- those are all things that are, that are not really apparent from your submission.
That might help, I mean, then, you know, some low bushes then might be all you need, um, for screening.
Maybe nothing at all.
Above the entire road, including the entire bend.
We actually have screening on the entire bend, like it's all this bushes and trees and stuff you can't.
Right, but showing the planning board through pictures or some sort of visual that that situation exists, you know. Just, just to give them that background and there may not, not need to be anything done other than to say, okay, you have provided enough information. We understand what's out there, you know, as a condition of your approval, you need to seek a variance from the zoning board.
I, I just. Elevation at the street level and then the elevation where your cars are going into the garage. And that itself will clear it out and, and, and then the contours, the contours seem to be not very clear what, what grade here, yeah.
Okay, well, that's tightened up, that's, doesn't seem too, too hard. Storm, or guidance on the stormwater.
You know, and I, I think that, you know, I, it's easy for, for us individually just to drive by, you know, drive up Ham and Rich Road just to take a look. The other um, thing to consider though, is that, that the, the impact of a pool is not just the pool itself. What's in, you know, at the ground surface, there's fencing and then there's lighting that usually is associated with that. Either lighting, you know, of, above grade, sort of lighting the area of the yard, uh, the pool lights themselves. Those are all things that go into our consideration of swimming pools that have an impact on neighborhoods. This is one of the reasons why, you know, uh, the, the code says that you're not supposed to put one in the front yard. So as you, as you put together your next version of your submission, uh, help us out by try and sort of thinking about all of those matters. And I think that the, uh, Sabrina, the planning department can sort of give you a quick education on the kinds of things that, that we would like to, uh, see. To be able to, uh, to talk to you about.
Okay, and we'll take some pictures too, I, you can take some pictures with the current lights on, there's no additional lights being added because of where the location is.
And I think, I think Sabrina made this comment somewhere in here, but uh, give us the location of the pool equipment. Um, and, and how that will be, uh, you know, hidden, et cetera, and the proximity of that to the next neighbor. So we always look at that as well, I, I'm sure you'll be fine, but if you just.
Show a picture with each item, so we'll, we'll just. Show a picture with each item, so we'll, we'll just show. I understand what you're.
Right now, there's no pool equipment. Is it going in somewhere, under somewhere, or are you creating an equipment pad, which then will increase your development coverage?
I think the equipment pad I thought was on one of the drawings.
No, um.
If it is, then it should be identified, just to make sure that we're capturing it.
That's fine. We'll make sure it's in there and and in in all the numbers.
Mr. Chairman, I just had, I I just had one question. Um, as far as direction with stormwater, are you guys going to require them to put in the water quality? Or you just want them to see some sort of like impervious pavers put in?
Well, I think uh, we'll we'll probably go along with the proposal, which is to uh, slice off two feet on the driveway. I don't know if we've really concluded, uh, whether or not we want to look at something, some other treatment up there at the top, and what that means. What are your thoughts, Bob? I mean, again, it's, it's not going to trigger a SWIP, is it, either way?
No, either way, it's not, but uh, do you want them, you know, to mitigate that or put in the stormwater or just take it out entirely?
Maybe planting that would mitigate it.
That's fine.
Screening, you know, I I think we, I don't think the board has enough information to provide direction on that, based on, you know, kind of some of the things we've talked about tonight.
Yeah, great. You know, where's the pool water going to go in the winter? It's going to come in by truck in the spring and go out by truck?
Oh, you're saying that we had to drain some of the pool in the winter?
You do need to drain, you need to draw down your pool in the wintertime.
Right. Right, and we have some, we have some rules on that, when that can be done in terms of the chemicals, et cetera. Especially in this, this is a conservation development, so uh, we are, we're careful. Uh, this was something we looked at very carefully in terms of the environmental issues.
Uh, that, that, that would be a good reason to put in the water quality at least, because then they can use the basins for the water quality for the drawdown as well.
Yeah, that's true. Good, good point. Uh, Jennifer and Sabrina, do we go to a public on this? Uh, do we want to?
I think you need a little more information.
Okay.
This is, this is, this is a beginning set of uh, drawings and 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 words. And I think it's very helpful, but we really need to see it. In black and white.
That's fine. Uh, all I can say is, I, you know, I'm sure you're anxious to get in the summer season. Uh, so as quickly as your architect and your planner, your, 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 pool guy can put together this information, we'll try to reschedule you and get you going. But do we, do we have to go to public on this?
Do go to a public hearing, yes.
Okay, so that means, uh, just to give you an idea, we probably have, not probably, we definitely have two more meetings at least on this. So if we can get the informal done, uh, get the information in good shape, we'll schedule the public hearing. Um, and, uh, outside of some sort of unforeseen situations, uh, try to get you done after the public hearing.
Excellent, that'd be fantastic.
Um, by the way, I I have Bob Cioli's plan open in front of me and just as, just as a point of interest, uh, directly to the east of your property across all those easements, et cetera, you'll note that on the map, there's a prehistoric site easement. So that was part of a Native American, uh, what we think was a Native American campsite along the stream there. So it was very, very interesting and uh, I think, don't go there. So all the, all the stuff is there and protected, but uh, it was very interesting where that uh, drop-off is with the stream.
Yes, yes. Matter of fact, I inspected that whole subdivision when it went in. It used to be called, uh, I forgot the name of it, but it was another corporation that went belly up and Hammond Ridge bought it over.
Yep, but I remember they got all kinds of uh, archaeological pieces out. And uh, I'm pleased to, pleased to report I was not there at the time.
How do we get a copy of that, just for our own, um, is that a public record?
You can submit a Freedom of Information Law request through the town's clerk's office and identify what information you're looking for, you know, regarding the archeo- archaeological findings of the Hammond Ridge subdivision. And then um, the clerk's office will work with my office to find the resources that you reference.
Awesome, yeah, because there's a lot of history here anyway, because the property was owned by the Vanderboles before.
I just, I just recommend, uh, Mr. Simpson, when you start digging for your pool, don't find an arrowhead.
Okay.
No matter what.
You don't tell anyone.
Don't let Tom see that.
Tom, do you remember when we were out there and that gigantic rock was there, the erratic, from the glacial erratic?
I do remember.
And that was, I think, further down, maybe lots, uh, thirty, thirty-one, something like that?
Yeah, but but the, the part of the history of this, of this site is that Bob and I were on the planning board when the original subdivision, as Bob Cioli has said, um, was done many years ago.
Bob was there too.
And by the way, Jen, just so you know, there were like forty-five easements we had to review.
All right, let's let these good people go.
And ourselves. Okay, thank you very much. So uh, please uh, touch base with the town and uh, we'll, we'll get you, try to get you going.
Are we willing to, you know, to set a second meeting, you know, when, you, uh, when the Mr. Simpson gets a reasonable estimate as to when it's going to be done? And then we can back it up two weeks and maybe that'll save a couple of weeks.
There is, to to, the, the time that it is taking for pool permits, he will have his pool next year.
Oh, really? Not for sure?
I am a hundred percent sure.
Okay, well, all right.
It's not processing with the town, it's, it's obtaining pool pumps and equipment and things of that nature. We, the, the entire manufacturing world is in a slowdown due to COVID. From wood to screws to pumps to pipes.
Yeah, I can understand the screws part.
Yeah, yeah. So, so it's kind of you'd all be concerned about that, but really, it's not a concern. This is their pool for twenty twenty-two.
Okay, shh, don't tell them.
Yeah, we have a few pools in our department, right, Sabrina?
Yeah. Yeah, just a couple.
Just a few, huh? Okay. All right, so we have uh, some minutes. Uh, we have uh, minutes for our December third meeting that Felicia has prepared. Uh, anyone have any substantive issues? Uh, for wordsmithing, perhaps, as we have done in the past, we can submit those to Felicia. I have a number of those. None of these are subs- substantive, but, just wordsmithing and.
I have nothing substantive.
Okay, anyone else? Anything substantive?
Nope.
If not, do is there a motion to adopt the December third, two thousand twenty, uh, minutes with the uh, non-substantive issues? That will be forth, yeah, as amended with the non-substantive changes that we will submit to Felicia.
So moved.
Okay, second? Second, can I? It's like Hollywood Squares. I'm looking at, people light up and then I don't hear anything. I figured they, they, I don't want the question after all.
I've been eating yourself, Hollywood Squares.
I was there with the Indians, so why not? Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, okay. Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are carried. And we have the December fifteen minutes. Any changes? Pardon?
Is that, this is from uh, twenty twenty or twenty nineteen?
Twenty twenty, twenty twenty, come on now.
So many of these memos.
Yes. Um, any changes other than the non-substantive ones? Wordsmithing?
Bob?
Yes, sir.
Question. The fifteenth, is that a regular meeting? That's not the special meeting, was it?
No.
I think it was a regular meeting.
It was the last meeting of the year.
No, I have no comment.
Okay. Um, is there a motion then to adopt the amended uh, minutes uh, with non-substantive changes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, any opposed? No, motion is carried. Um, we meet, reminder, Thursday, we're supposed to have any comments that we want to get into staff, uh, the Form-based code, right? Close of business on Thursday. And then we are scheduled to meet, are we, did, I forget now, did we have a special?
May fourth meeting.
Thank you. So then we will meet on that on May fourth. It will be at the tail end of that meeting.
Very good, thank you.
Very good. Is there a motion to close the meeting?
Bob, Bob?
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, I have on my table minutes of the special meeting. It's number nine on the agenda. From Thursday, December third.
We just did those.
December third. It was a special, that was the one with Nick.
That was a special meeting, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
But it says regular meeting.
It's, it says, it says on my copy, special meeting.
Oh.
Are there two?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's it. That's correct, special.
Well, I, I, this, uh, this particular one, I think, requires some careful review. So I would prefer that, well, I may have some substantive comments to this. So can we hold off approval of these until next time?
I, I don't have a problem with that. Does anyone else have a problem with that?
Which one?
Isn't that the one that the board just approved before the December fifteen? You just approved those minutes.
So do we have to de-approve them?
Um, so I I guess you could uh, take a vote to rescind um, the approval of the December third meeting minutes. Um, and put them on a future agenda.
Is there, uh, I mean, Tom has asked, asked for that. Is anyone opposed to that? Or is there a motion to uh, to rescind the approval of those minutes?
I've just, the, the, let me just sort of expand on that for like, you know, thirty seconds. Uh, we're about ready to produce a uh, a memorandum on the Form-based code. And it seems to me that, that, it seems to me that the, 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 the discussion in this meeting, I believe, goes directly to the content of that memo. And it's not like I want to change history here, but I would feel more comfortable if I had a better, a better understanding of the wording in this document. Uh, because I think that the, those, this, this document, that our memo flows from this document, and it would, I I'd feel more comfortable if we, I had a chance to take a look at it.
Was the thrust of this meeting, was this the last meeting that we met on, on the GEIS, the draft? Or was this our first meeting and first discussion of the Form-based code? It looks to me that there's a lot of EIS in here.
It says, Chappacaw Hamlet Rezoning Generic Environmental Impact Statement. So that's the subject of it.
Right.
That's the, that is the, that is the DG EIS memo. That is not the code memo.
Thank you, Sabrina. I I have the same concern. So if there's no objection, uh, I would ask that, uh, if the proper thing to do is to rescind, uh, our vote and just take it up next time, give me a chance to just get my, any, any, any suggestions I have, get them down and get them into everybody and then we'll be done with it.
I, I, I think that's fine, except, um, we, if it's about the DG EIS memo, I mean, that's a memo we have already,
Right.
um, submitted. Uh, but I have no problem, Tom, with, uh, you know, waiting to review this. I just don't know if if that changes your view.
Well, no, I know it's, we've already submitted it, uh, but, uh, these documents have a history. And it's, it's uncertain where all of this is going to go in the public record. Uh, this particular thing in the public record. And um, I would like to be sure that the voice that we used in the meeting in discussing these things is accurately represented in this document. Because at some point in some time, somebody may put those two documents together and say, wait a minute, you know, what's going on here?
That's fair.
Well, with, with a caveat that, you know, obviously we cannot rewrite history. Uh, the minutes are the minutes and we have.
The minutes are also derived from the video.
Right.
That's fine. But, but the minutes aren't necessarily, um,
Correct.
Literally from the video, otherwise we just have the video.
Right.
So it's somebody's interpretation of the video and our interpretation of what happened is equally valid. So I I just would like the opportunity to take a look at it.
Yep, I think that's fair. So is there a motion then to rescind the approval of the special meeting of December third? Uh, which we approved previously? Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, any opposed?
Hi.
Okay, uh, motion's carried, so we'll reconsider the special meeting of December third at, uh, let's, well, maybe schedule for the May fourth meeting, our next one. That would be appropriate since we're talking about the Form-based code then, anyway.
A question, can, can Tom be given a copy of the video and everything that we did?
The video is online.
I can find it.
Online, okay, so you can access that too. That'd be good, if you could.
Okay. Good. Is there a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?